Through that back of that car, nobody got hurt. I can't believe when that be something coming behind you.
There's a guy if you got questions.
Betty said her internet connection is really unreliable today, but she's I see she's on here, so we'll see how it goes.
And I will not be there next week.
No.
No, the 22nd I won't be there. Yeah, I've got the next show, so I won't be on one way or other. So hopefully Betty's here.
When is that?
Uh, go to the God seventeen through the 22nd.
Your microphone looks like it's off.
Oh, sorry. We got the seventeen through the 22nd.
Any fun or?
Yeah, we're going someplace south of Cancun. This was planned two years ago, three years ago.
And you're just letting us know?
Yes. Three years ago, we're. I have no idea. I've just gone along. I know it's gonna be warm. Not that it's not bad yet. Yeah.
Okay, I've got nine o'clock for all the meetings order. Start with pledge of allegiance. But. On the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, united in this world with liberty and justice. Roll call.
Mclure.
Here.
Packard. Here. Smith. Here. Manning.
Here.
Hammond.
Here.
Uh, conflict of interest declarations. Hearing none approve agenda.
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing that roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mclure.
Yes, motion passes. Approve minutes.
I move to approve.
Second.
Uh, motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing that roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Mclure.
Yes, motion passes. Are there any visitors to be heard?
I'm Paul Hassy. I have one question. The county wants to buy that seven point four acres on Cherry Street. The question today I have is when are you going to appraise the land?
For what purpose?
Yeah.
Put a value on it.
Actually.
You have it appraised, especially when you're playing with taxpayers' money. So I was wondering when are you going to have it appraised? That's the question for the record, please.
Wasn't planning on it, I guess. Right.
Any other visitors? Hearing none. Karen? That if you just want to sit right there, I'll move them.
Take this one here if you want. Got to turn it on.
Okay, can you hear me? Okay. Um, I I guess I. I I don't know if I want to. So I'm caring to land with alternative HR. Most of you guys know me. Um, and we work with a lot of counties, including Clay County. We've been doing wage assessments for a lot of different places. So Rod reached out a couple of weeks ago and said he had a highway department to be person to hire and because he had a couple of people quit and go to the city. They're making more money. So I guess the question is, do you want to look at your wages? Do you want to talk about them? I did pull some. Rod did a lot of work of getting together wages from county workers from all over the state. How many do you have, Rod?
Thirty some. Six now.
Twenty six.
No.
No, I think yeah, I was gonna say you have over thirty. And so I did make copies of it. I didn't really realize everybody was gonna be gone because I could have sent it ahead of time. But if you guys want to look at it here, and I can send it to you, Carrie, if you want. Do you want to do it right? Rod, I'll give you one.
Thanks.
Carrie, a second here. Let me send it to you. Sorry about that. I should have thought about that. And so Rod, while I'm doing that, do you want to talk about some of the history and about the cost of the CDLs and how hard it is to hire?
Well, we pretty much.
Oh, okay.
I did reach out to the counties just see what they're doing on the CDL thing. Pretty much like we are kind of waiting to see what maybe the the state like LTAP can come up with to help with training. They're just starting to look at it. Other words, it's basically if we hire someone that doesn't have a CDL and we I guess in our job description require a class C, at least a class B, then it's four to six weeks in the tech school. That either we pay them to go do it while they're doing it and we paid for it, or I don't know, we got to figure something out, but nobody, I mean, all the other counties are in the same boat, but nobody's has a plan of attack except for three of the bigger counties. They just absolutely won't even interview anybody with on a CDL. And of course, they're paying more for their workers too, but. Nothing really new since last time on that, except for I did hire one person since we met last week, so.
Did they have a CD?
Yes, they did. He did. It's kind of disappointed, but he still took the job.
So just a question for you, Rod. When I looked at Southeast Tech, the class B CDL, it just had two day prep, and that was two hundred fifty for class A. It said whatever, fifty five hundred dollars for the class. Does class B require that?
Yeah. Well. I'm not sure. Only a two day.
Now.
That's the drive bus.
No, okay. Yeah.
Fred, but so the class, the class B is like your bus. You need, you need air brakes. That's why you like.
Oh.
Twenty six thousand pounds and air brakes.
Okay, okay. So then that would have to be the A. So then that's fifty five hundred from.
I thought they called that a shoulder resolution still, the bus one, but.
That's class B now.
Oh, okay.
So what about Yankton County?
Did they respond to you?
They never responded to them. I saw this.
No, you know, there's I, Chris Jacobson, you guys are familiar with her. So all the superintendents bounce off an email to her and she sends it out to all the counties so we don't have to. And these are just the ones that got back to me. I just was kind of curious what was out there, I guess, basically what I was looking at. And there's also a question on that survey, what they're going to do about the CDL training and pretty much everybody has no clue what they're gonna do.
Because if you look at that, maybe if you take Turner, Union, Charles Mix and the Bonville, actually, we're the lowest of all four of them, and they got a CDL.
I guess I never.
Bottoms eighteen thirty-one, Turner seventeen fifty-eight, Union seventeen fifty. We're sixteen thirty-three. Charles Mix is seventeen. So I mean, we're, we're lower than all of them. Makings best. I mean, I don't know if you.
And say more.
More, yeah.
You know.
Yeah.
I also.
Bottom is eighteen thirty-one.
Right.
I pulled a, um, we have access to something that's called a salary assessor through a company called Economic Research Institute. And they do, they pull salary data from all industries from all over the country. And I think they pull like two hundred salary surveys and they aggregate the numbers together. And we can pull down as to a finite place as a zip code. So I put in Vermillion. I put in a truck driver, a medium truck driver, and for the one year of experience, and I did this this morning. The median, uh, one year of experience, a median rate of sixteen fifty-one. If you go with somebody who has even four years of experience or three, let's just do three years, they're at seventeen ninety-three. Uh, we use that assessor when we're, when we've been doing them for the other counties. So we did some wage analysis for McCook in July of twenty twenty-one, so about six months ago for that same kind of position. And I think we pulled a Madison that was as close as we could get for a region. And I pulled it again this morning, same job between July and now that that they did it by annual salary. It increased fifteen hundred dollars a year, which is about seventy-five cents. So wages are just, and that's why everybody's doing it right now. So, you know, I I think we're just seeing the beginning of it. If you, if you don't look at your wages and, and again, I I realize it's budget, so you got to figure out how you can put it in, but you're going to start getting the lower end of the applicant pool, I want to say. And what happens then is a couple of years down the road, sometimes those same people are the ones that cause more issues. So it's not only, you know, maybe harder to hire, but then it gets more expensive later as you try to manage them. So just, just something to think about. I don't, I don't have any real recommendations about where you should be and what you should do, but it's, I mean, Rod's right to bring it up.
Yeah, one other question.
Yeah.
Carrie, what is people that start here in the forehouse? What do they start?
Um, there's a range like for which positions.
Say the treasure shop, they just got that hired.
Let me see if I can get connected and look that up real quick. My remote desktop wasn't working earlier, but maybe it is now.
I mean, I know it's completely different jobs, but just curious.
It well, and that's a good thing to compare it to. I mean, just because it is completely different and say, okay, what are we? Yeah.
I know we don't require them to have a CDL.
Right, right. So it should be a lower, that's a, that's a higher skilled and it should be a premium pay because of it. Yeah.
Uh, it looks like it's gonna work for me. So let me just get that.
Yeah, and I didn't pull your wage grid to look at it, so I I don't actually know where you are. It did.
And like I said last week, this is the reason why I brought it up. So I mean, the wage part, I'm looking at how we're gonna pay to get a CDL. So I mean, it's one of those, we either gotta pay now or pay later type of thing, or drop the requirement for the CDL and then.
Yeah.
I don't know. I everybody needs to be able to drive a truck when somebody's sick or gone to Lincoln. Especially in the wintertime, summer, maybe not so much. I put them in a mower. Well, I guess not.
I'd answer your question. It would be fifteen ninety-three.
Is it they're starting out? Okay. If the.
Forty six.
We don't know what kind of benefits these other counties are.
I mean, we didn't ask that now.
Well, you said just to pretty crude and use.
What's, what's a city pay? Do you know? What does a city pay for starting?
Well, eighteen. What did it say? Eighteen bucks.
Okay, and that was with somebody with experience.
But one of them has a class in CDL. Now, one, I'm just talking to two that just went.
Right.
The highway department went up there.
And do you start everybody at the same regardless of how many years of experience? Because that might be a way to, if you're going to hire in somebody, you know, just got their CDL or maybe doesn't have it, can be a different rate than somebody who's been doing it for five years and has more of a.
That's usually the only one we get, except for this gentleman, but he's been driving trucks for
Wow.
Years, but he had to get out of the green dust and stuff, so.
Okay.
That's why he decided to.
Great.
But isn't that where the steps would come in then, in the bank?
Yeah, but can you start someone higher in the steps? Yeah.
We've hired that way.
Right. So you hire at the step where they would be, you add on the years' experience, so you don't have to.
Don't have a like a step. Okay, here's a mark. This is where a guy with two years' experience, six years' experience, you know. Because you got to watch out when you start doing that. All of a sudden, I got a guy who's been out there for ten years, and this guy just gets hired just because he has a CDL, don't mean he could run any of the equipment.
No, but I mean, you take that into consideration. He can at least drive a truck.
Right.
Which is better than somebody who just got their CDL.
Right.
Yeah, we'll see when. You know, I don't know anything about the guy, so he hasn't, I mean, he hasn't started yet, so.
But you could at least give him some credit for having experience. So even if you give him half credit and just figure out where he is, if he's got ten years of experience, you give him five, since he hasn't been here, and you can start him a little higher. Is that what you're talking about?
Getting involved and everything done. And that's why I was gonna talk to you about how far up do you think?
Right.
Because I know how that's important.
Right.
Well, everybody knows what everybody else makes.
Right, right. Yeah, if you can justify it, then you should be all right. So if you do a, maybe even with him.
That battle for fifteen years.
Yeah.
But no, like I said, the thing I brought this up was to figure out if they had any ideas what we could do.
I think our steps are the, are the best way to know. I mean, if they've just got the new CDL, they should be at the starting wage, but if they've got twenty years' experience of driving or running heavy equipment or whatever.
And pretty much they still ain't gonna come. I'm not too worried about that, I guess. But yeah, I could.
Just because they start here doesn't mean they're, they have to start at the starting wage. Because I know we've done that in the forehouse.
And I, I've never had that trouble yet. And somebody was a lot of experience, except for this gentleman.
Well, that's anyway, you're getting the new one.
Truck.
Yeah. I mean, the other, the other thought might be to do, to think about doing a hiring bonus if somebody comes in with a CDL. So it's fifty five hundred.
I asked some of the counties that they're in the process of.
Looking at it.
Looking at that. Not, not a long term.
Right.
One, but like maybe a thousand bucks and then that's it. Or some of them are three thousand dollars, but then they got it. They got to be there five years to get the whole three thousand.
Oh, okay.
And I, I mean, that would have to be something carried with it. I hope my math good enough to figure out how that's gonna work every year and get, you know, but.
You could just put it in on their anniversary. They get a bonus.
And everybody's still kind of, like I said, the reason for this was see where everybody else is at, and the only one that is really doing anything right now is Pennington County, and they're training one of their guys to be an instructor, and that's gonna be all he does. And I have no idea what his wage is, but of course, they have many, many people and a lot of trucks out there, so. That's not an option that they want. They're not going to take on other counties either. They're strictly just the Pennington County. But that's about all I found out last week. But people were looking at that hiring bonus. We talked about that last week too a little bit. So. We, we haven't even advertised in the paper. It'll be coming out in a paper. But we got an opening. This guy just happened to talk to Larry because he was having trouble with the green dust. So he was kind of looking to get out of that situation with whatever, asthma or whatever it is. So. But to an eight point as dire as it was last week, if don't have to bring it off, and somebody just pops in to say hi.
It, it makes sense, though, even to go back to this guy to say, we're going to give you some credit for years of experience because your next hire probably won't be that easy. And if you want someone's experience, then this guy's gonna say, wait a second, why didn't you give me any credit? So maybe it's, I mean, that can still be done. I don't know.
Can there should, should there be a probation?
Right, I, yeah.
Six month probation. And, and maybe I don't, used to be after six months, did we not give them a fifty cent raise? Has that ever?
Why not? Since I don't even know when. I don't know.
Maybe since the step and grade went in place, because that's usually, although you can still do probation.
So when, um, when you advertise this, um, will you advertise it then in a range based on experience? Or will you put an hourly rate on it? Or how, how do you usually do that?
Usually it's just worded that we're looking for um, a worker one. It's not, no experience necessary, but they are required to be able to get a class, at least a class B CDL within three months. And if they have experience in equipment, that's helpful, that kind of moves them up from the guy that comes in that's never even been in a skid loader or tractor, you know? But it's basically been, I don't know, maybe we need to change that ad up too, I.
Yeah.
Offer suggestion. Folks online, I, uh, I'm, I'm listening to this and it's very interesting to me, but uh, one thing we run into in law enforcement is certification versus non-certification. We have a, you know, on our county pay scale, steps have to do with your years of service. Your grade has to do with the job you're doing. And we have our uncertified deputies hired on one grade. But if I hire somebody that's certified, they start at a different grade. It's actually two grades higher. And so I, I could equate that to where if you have your entry level worker at whatever grade that they're in, you could have a, a entry level worker with a CDL at a grade higher. So they're already getting credit for that CDL and certification, so you don't have to, don't have to put them through that. That's what we do in law enforcement. I think that's common across the state.
That's what I was just gonna suggest, Andy, right when you piped in.
Andy, do you start them then at the lowest step when they're new?
Starts at the lowest step. Uh, their grade is based on their longevity. Now, there has been the occasion where I've had a an experienced person coming, come in and they, um, I've started them at a higher, higher step based on that. And, and, and that is only when I equate that experience to what we have. So someone that comes in that, that maybe worked in law enforcement, but not doing the kind of dirt duties we do, the work we do, they don't, they really don't have much other than some experience and background, but they can't necessarily do the job. I wouldn't give them steps. It's not fair to the people that have been here already. It, it's pretty hard on somebody that's been here for four years to train somebody that comes in with three years' experience elsewhere and they're getting similar pay, and then they're not doing the same level and quality of work. So that generally the steps, I, I try to hold to that. The steps are longevity, the grade is, is skill, and, and that generally is related to certification.
That, and that makes sense to me too, but.
And personally, I would, I would suggest much of this conversation take place in the department head meeting. Try to keep the county on a, on some sort of uniformity in how we're applying these grades and steps.
Yeah, I, I really like that. You know, particularly since that, you know, the, the CDL licensing is very parallel to, you know, having a law enforcement certification. And it certainly saves, um, you know, saves the county money when, when somebody comes in with, uh, you know, with a, a CDL license, so, and experience, uh, that, that, that's relevant. So, and I, I also really like the idea of this discussion happening among, um, department heads. Because I, I, you know, I think ultimately having, um, a, a kind of uniform approach, um, across departments to hiring and, um, you know, pay increases. I, you know, makes, makes all the sense in the world to me. So, uh, you know, it might be useful to ask, uh, department heads to meet and then maybe Rod to return with, um, you know, a, a proposal for how, how this might work. The only other thing I'd add is that, um, you know, I, I think we're low. I, I, in terms of, of, of salary, looking at these other, these other counties, and it's probably a good idea to, uh, to not, not be among the lowest, but rather to, to shoot for median or slightly higher than median wage.
I guess I think, um, we're getting away from the originality of why I brought this up. I mean, I'm, I understand the step, the grade, the experience, but if we hire somebody that doesn't have a CDL and we want them to get one, are we willing to put them through school to pay for that or somehow? You know what I'm saying? I mean, right now it's three hundred dollars. That's what it's costing us to send somebody, or it did, it went away on the seventh. The whole lot. But, you know, I understand all this other. And like I said last week, that wasn't the original reason why I brought it up. And I kind of wish I'd left the dollar amounts off and just ask strictly about the CDL and what we can do to get somebody that would be a good worker but has no CDL and I don't know.
Again, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I, I, I keep equating this to my office, but, uh, you know, I, I do hire, if I hire somebody with certification, they started the grade higher. If I hire uncertified, and once they complete that certification, they immediately bump up to that higher grade. We started doing that about ten plus years ago. Because otherwise, your employee becomes marketable immediately to other agencies, uh, once they're certified. So we, we give them that bump and, and if, if, uh, you know, through study, Rod starts hiring his, uh, CDL employees at a higher grade, then once they get their CDL, if they didn't have one, they should move up immediately. That said, um, we certify our people after hire. And there's not a fee for that. They don't go, we don't pay the state for law enforcement training, but we pay their wages while they're there. But if Rod mentions three hundred dollars, I find that to be extremely cheap. That, that, I don't, that, that is cheap for the county.
That's gone now, Andy.
Yeah, that's all we're on as of Monday.
Yeah, it's fifty five hundred dollars.
Five thousand to fifty-five hundred. So they pay, your employees pay for their own certification?
Some do. They, uh, if they go to, uh, one of the trade schools, uh, Lake Erie Tech or Southeast Tech. Uh, Adam Oz was one of our recent deputies that went through that. And if they come out of that certified, then they have paid for that, and it benefits us. So of course, we hire them at the higher rate. Most of ours at the, at the kind of pay we, we pay, we don't often get certified applicants. And so we, we usually have to send them away.
So are you, are you paying them an hourly wage to go through the certification?
While they're there, they're on the clock, yes. And there's five hundred and twenty hours that we pay them, pay their wages while they train.
The kid that went back to the city, he actually interned with the city, correct?
The kid that went back to the city, he actually interned with the city, correct?
Two, two summers.
He went to Mitchell Botec.
No, he went to Lake Area.
Okay, is, and I know we talked about this last time, is there a way to? Try to contact them up there and say, hey? You know, we'll take an intern for the summer, we'll pay the intern for the summer. And that way they can get part of their, they, they can get that schooling up there. You get an opportunity to look at them. See if you think they're going to work for you. And then some ways, if, can we figure out a way to actually help pay some of their schooling up there?
Well, that'd be through the Dakota Bill.
Yeah, that's what I'm kidding at.
Yeah, that's what I brought up last week about.
Cause I think that'd be the way to go.
The scholarship.
But we could do that also. Would it work, Rod, if you hired somebody? Without a CDL and they were with you for a year. So it, so you knew they were going to work out and I sent them to. Send them to get their CDL if they wanted to.
We could find something for them to do. I mean, not like. You know, there's other stuff than driving a truck.
Right, yeah.
It's usually when we get a big snowstorm. And somebody's out sick, then we, I'm either driving the truck or.
We, we're going to have to pay for the CDL. We're going to have to pay them their wages if they send them to school. We just have to put something in there that if they quit. They owe us the money for the CDL.
And if the South Dakota LTAP comes through on. And they're just in the beginning stages. That would be, you know, something that would be. A smaller cost than I'm thinking, because they do all the work for us. Whenever we have them out here, that's at, that's free. You know, SDSU, they're through SDSU and they help all the counties, township, cities, anybody that requests. And they do our grader training. They come down and show our new guys how to. Run the road graders and stuff and that, but it's not something that they could just. Jump into and do because there's going to be liability risks. They got to get somebody trained to be a trainer. And the kid we got from. Lake Area Tech, he wasn't in it just for a CDL. He was in it for heavy equipment. And the CDL was just part of the.
Right.
Two-year program. So I mean, they have just a CDL course. That takes like five weeks.
I think it'd be nice to have somebody that you could actually take a look at before we spent $5,500 on it. Or even the other training, because it's, that's, that's your way ahead. Maybe you know if you want it or not. Cause you know, somebody might get in there after one month, said, well, we've asked for that money anyway, but you really don't want it.
And they go somewhere else.
That'd be a stipulation.
Right, exactly.
You know, like if we did the scholarship at Lake Area Tech.
Right.
Um, one of them was, I can't remember the Build Back. Or what did you call?
Dakota Bill.
Dakota Bill. I think that was five years. That they have to work for you to stretch a million. I think that was only three. But I'm not sure about how that, what that one applies to.
Carrie, can you ask Christine? If we can use those scholarships as a county? Or if those are only for private businesses?
We, we ask who?
Christie Jacobson.
Oh, yeah. Should have asked her. She's the one I sent out the email with, but. Yeah, so I mean. It's not, uh, the only thing I think in handbook. It says they're required to have one. Is that something we? Just need to, to change that for working one?
Yeah, if you want, yeah, if you had work for them to do and they didn't need to have it, I, you can take it out, that, then, then change your work.
I don't have no problem with that. Hire somebody that don't have a CDL.
And if they had a CDL, then you just hire them as a worker too?
Yeah, maybe we could look at doing that.
And then that would change the grade, the, and the, that would address that issue. I'm just wondering, what do they do in the, I know, I don't know if you're on, what do they do in equalization? Cause don't you have to do certifications for that too? Do you pay for that? They go out for their?
We do.
Yeah, okay.
It's just, nothing's ever been.
Formalized.
Four or five weeks off the job.
Okay.
It's $5,500 and we still get to pay you too.
Right, right.
Nothing's ever been quite that costly. I think that's the deal.
Okay.
You know, like equalization has their appraiser certifications and, and there are fees for that. You know, and they, they study for that and.
And you pay for their books and you pay for their time to study or not?
We do, um. I think a lot of the studying probably happens right in the office too, but. It's, it's not the cost, you know, it's not that level of cost. I think that's the issue that Rod's having is that $5,500.
And, and time.
And as my fault too, I should have brought this up. But the way everything was going, it looked like it was going to get kicked down the road for a little bit. But not with federal. No, they use, there was no. If San job were doing it, because like states through NACE were a member of NACE. And just about every state in the nation wrote a letter to them. With all the superintendent signature on them that. It's going to about break our back and throw it down our, please say, give us another year to try to figure something out. Absolutely.
It's funny, you go for $300 to 5,500. That's quite a jump.
Well, before, I mean, we're paying them.
Yes.
We're still paying them to get certified, so to speak. We pay them to go take the test. When they get the test done, they got to at least drive with somebody with a CDL for two weeks. Then whenever they feel comfortable, so I mean, we're paying them.
Right.
Actually paying two guys, because one has, somebody with a CDL has to ride with them.
Right.
And then when they feel. Like they're ready to do the whole thing. Then the last time we had, two people had to go on a Sunday. Over the eight, because that's the only day the guy could do the test was on a Sunday, so. But I mean, so we still basically, we paid for their license and we paid for their time to get the license. Pretty much everybody. Out there started that way. Only a couple of B included, but I had a half class A back in the day or I didn't even get interviewed.
So anyway, I suppose when you go to hire now, it's going to be wages depend on experience. And if they don't have a CDL, I suppose you got to walk them through, are you willing to get one? And this is going to be the process now.
And we always ask them that. Are, are you willing to get one? And we've had some people, oh, I don't think I could. You know, what are we going to do in the truck? We're going to be plowing snow. No, I want nothing to do with that. And I don't know. What else does a county do with a truck? Well, gravel, we push snow basically. But we've had people get up in the middle of the interview and. That's just the way it goes sometimes. Some of them are, I think I could handle that. And it makes it a lot easier. We have automatic transmissions. It's to the sticks. That makes it a little easier. It's not quite as. Intimidating. I think it's. Anyway, I'm old school.
Of course, that'll be the. That'll be the other thing you'll have to decide. Are you going to send them to get a CDL just for an automatic? Or for a manual?
Yeah, if you get one for an automatic, just so you know, if you get one. For an automatic, that's all you could drive. But if you get one for a stick shift, you could drive an automatic. So I just, a lot of these guys, oh, only in a class A, not a class B. Cause most all the guys out there have class B except for the guy just hired. And. One other guy beside me. In other words, everybody's class B. And I tried to get them to, hey, we could use a class A, but they just don't feel comfortable pulling the trailer. So that's where they stay at, class B, pushing snow, which we don't push snow with anything that needs a class A yet. Anyway.
One of the issues that comes up on this thing of them, uh. Uh, bail, not, not being able to commit to a, uh, getting a CDL during the interview process or the hiring process. A lot of times they may realize, and, uh, you may realize as it goes on. That they may not qualify to get a CDL for some fairly long amount of time. For instance, if they've had a CDL before and they got caught speeding 15 miles an hour. Uh, over the limit, uh, they're disqualified from, from a CDL for a certain period of time. The other part is, uh, drug and alcohol, uh, convictions. Uh, that can disqualify a person from, from, uh. Uh, having an active CDL for a certain number of ti- uh, certain number of, I think a couple of years, as I recall.
Yep.
It comes to mind that. Uh, my memory is a little shaky on this, but I believe for the landfill, we always advertised. Um, CDL preferred in the hiring.
But in, in the highway department, I think it's a lot like the situation I've had when I, you know, I'm owning my drilling business is that. Uh, it's really important to have almost all your employees or several of your employees having a, a CDL. And I needed class A too, because when we mobilize to a site, we've got, uh. It's, uh, sort of like a National Guard convoy going down the road. You've got a number of trucks to. Get all the equipment that's necessary to the job. And I know in a lot of instances, it's that way for, uh, Rod too. See if they're, uh, during the asphalting and that sort of thing, uh. You, you've got a number of trucks that need to get there. And if you don't have enough drivers to do it. You have to make multiple trips with the CDLs that are available, which slows the whole process down and costs you money. And one more point is, is that I, you know, I, I really think that it's, uh, something that should be done would be to have a. Certain differential, certain value put on the CDL. Uh, for instance, uh, a couple bucks an hour, you know, maybe a buck and a half, maybe probably two bucks an hour. I've always figured it to be worth a couple bucks an hour. If someone has a. CDL, a class B, and for me, I needed a tanker and air brakes. Uh, at the time of hire, and if they don't have that in hand. Uh, give them what it takes to get that, help them get that, uh. Uh, by giving them study time, giving them, uh, uh, the cost of the testing process and all that sort of stuff. Give them all of that. Uh, and then bump them the two out, two bucks an hour after, after they, uh, are awarded that CDL.
Sounds good.
So when they do their health card, who?
We don't have to have health cards, because we don't go out of state. Don't go more than 50 miles out. We're intrastate, not interstate. So we do not require a health card.
We don't require state does. Cause I have, I have to have one. No, I don't leave the state.
No. If you haul commercial.
Do you haul, do you haul stuff that you purchased from another state that came from another state?
If I don't do my health card, my CDL laps us back into a regular driver's license.
I haven't had a medical card since I quit over the road.
When, when I look to another time is if you either transport stuff that came from another state or if you, if you're producing stuff that is going to go to another state. So if you're like the popcorn company that makes their popcorn here in South Dakota and they only sell to South Dakota. They don't have to have it. And I wonder if that's why, I don't know what, I, I think your stuff probably goes out of state eventually.
Well, you said. Material. To, to the border general to get tackled. But the state says we don't have to have that anymore either. We used to have asthma, then you had to get that every, every two years, uh, renewed and. For many years that was, we were required to have it. We had to pay the extra 25 and at the end was 50. And you had that on your license, but that came out of our pocket.
Yeah, I, I have a active CDL myself, but, uh, I let my health card lapse. Uh, last time. Because plan on retiring and not really using a CDL that much, but that is the case is, is I understand it. That if you don't go out of state, you don't need the health card.
I think you're allowed to go 100 miles. Cause we're still allowed to drive into Sioux City to get asthma.
Really?
Yeah, it's a certain distance from the point of entry. Uh. And it varies, it varies from spot to spot. You kind of need to know what those bubbles are that go out into the adjoining state. It's a little different from, if you enter at, uh, Yankton than you do if you enter at Sioux City, for instance, into Nebraska. And from Macron, it's a little different from each of those two. So they're, they're. There are little bubbles out into adjoining states that you're okay to go, go to without, uh, the med card.
So you know where you're headed? Kind of, not really.
Yeah, I got, I got ideas now.
Okay.
I think it's at the end of the day, somehow we're going to have to pay for this. Just got to figure out how to, how to make sure they don't quit as soon as they get it.
So the $5,500 is basically roughly two 50 an hour difference if you do it over the course of a year. Um, so it makes sense to start somebody that come in with it. You start them at that higher grade. I like that idea. It's a much cleaner way to do it. This guy coming in, we may need to look at, maybe he should have been hired at a higher grade perhaps, so he doesn't. You know, be treated unfairly. And if you wanted to do a three months thing before you jump them to that grade. Makes sense. So I think, I think we talked about it and then if you guys bring it back to department head and make sure you're doing the grades the same. Across the different departments, I think that's a great idea.
I think that's a good idea.
And then if you want to look at potentially paying then to get, if you hire somebody at that worker one level. And you pay for the. Cost of getting their certification, once they get it, then, so then again, I guess that is going to come back and you maybe want to come back to say. I want to ask for half the money to pay for it or something. Um, come back with an, an actual request. It might be easier. Does that make sense? Unless you guys want to come up with a request right now?
I know that makes sense to me.
Okay. So we don't, I don't think there's any, any proposal that needs to change, because that's just something I, I think, I don't think there's any motion, because I think you can just make that change in your department, right? About where you're hiring that, because it's already in place. So.
Yep.
And then, and then I'm going to go back to that other question. At some point you may want to look at. Raising that bottom so that you're not close to the bottom of where everybody else is, because you are going to start to feel that when you do your new hires.
Yeah.
Anything else?
That's all I got.
Anybody have anything else for Karen? Thank you, Karen.
Thanks, Karen.
Thank you.
Baptist Creek?
Now the easy part.
Yeah, they're all behind you for a reason, Rod.
Yeah, I know.
Way behind you.
They all got my back.
Yeah. Might want to watch your back though.
Are you going to talk, Craig? Are you going to talk? Just move it down, just move it down to you if you want, if you need it. If you're going to talk, the button's got to be up.
So, we got a. Bridge I was requested to take a look at, uh, Baptist Creek. In 308 South Hub City, East of University. Um, the township.
All three of you here?
No way.
Main's still.
Oh, that's right. So two of the township board members. Are here, um, Craig Nelson and.
Ryan.
Ryan Pickbaum. They asked me to look at this bridge because it. Is starting to, uh. What we call the header beam or the, it's a wooden structure and the header beam is rolling off the east side, pushing the. Pushing the back wall and the piling. Away from each other. And so they were wondering what they could do. Well, first we had Johnson Engineering. Go, uh. Inspect it and definitely.
inspect it and definitely they told us we had to close it. So it's, it's closed at the moment. I guess I got some different quotes from Holloway, who does our bridging box culvert installation. And for a 14, 14 concrete box culvert is 151,000. And that's what, we have about a 14 foot opening there right now. But, and I should have sent this out, but we all, we have a 30 foot, 28 foot opening. And we got it closed down to 14 foot. There's a big bottleneck at that. And I don't think the box culvert is gonna fix the problem. I think this is the one where the sprayer fell in on the, when the, the bridge stayed there, but Baptist Creek washed the back walls out on both sides in two different times. We've poured concrete at the bottom and it, it's not helping. And I think half the problem is that it's a, a terrible bottleneck. So I had Holloway's look at a different option. And they came up with either a concrete precast double T, which is like the bridge north of there on. Oh, what's that township?
Which road that goes up to school?
Yeah, Marshalltown, which is to the north of that. That's a 30, well, that one's only 24 feet wide, but this would be a 30 foot wide by 24 long to get rid of the bottleneck. That's 219,000. Yeah. And then one of those steel structures like we've been putting in, that's 235,000. The only problem was the last two options. I don't know if that'd be a problem or not, but that would come back into the, to be a county bridge like the one to the north of it is. So we'd be required to have it inspected. But of course, the fourth option, nobody likes and that's leave the road closed. And that's these, Craig had some input on that. When we talked about it too. Since then, we have replaced the little wooden structure at university and 308. So it's pipes, no weight limits there. But I mean, we just finally got around to doing it. It's been on the schedule for a couple of years. And while the road was closed for the other bridge, we figured it's a good time to get that changed. So there is access to the fields on both sides of the road.
Pipe's not an option.
Both sides of the, no, both sides of the creek.
So what'd you propose to fix it if you were fixing? Is the, is it still qualified as a small structure?
The 14 by 14 box culvert wood, yes.
That's not fixed.
No, I don't think so, but that's another thing I wanted to ask you, cause I'm not, you know, there was money to pay to get these bridges put on a list, inspection list. I'll take did that from that grant that, so, yeah. So is there money in that same grant to? To replace? So then, but not improve, correct? It's.
That would be a question for Greg.
Barbara? Cause that would be the only thing, and I, I don't know. I think as many times as we fix that bridge and you look at an aerial view and you could, when it's cutting the flow half down. That's right. And I mean, you're gonna fix it, put a box culvert in it. And I guess maybe if Baptist Creek is one of the first places in Clay County to flood the university road. And that ain't gonna make it, that's never gonna quit, no matter what we put in here. But it sure is a bottleneck. And north of there, does that have Mount Marshalltown? Is a county structure, concrete, you know, that's been there. Well, we put it in since I've been here. So like mid 90s. And I believe they had a little wooden structure there at that time too.
Well, you can see the headers are rolling off there.
We had to close it. In other words, somebody come out there, get the right bones, the deck's gonna fall again.
Problem with Marshalltown Road. Or which doesn't have.
You might wanna, you might wanna, you got it up, yeah.
The problem with the Marshalltown Road to the north is if you go to the east intersection, that's a half mile line. So there's, there's technically no intersect, four-way intersection there. You can't hardly turn any trucks or anything onto that road. It, it's hard because it's narrow township roads and you don't have that extra room because it's not an actual four-way intersection. It's just a three. So we're hoping, we don't have much flow going west in about a five mile north-south run there. Now, where, we haven't been able to use this road anyway because of the tonnage limit on that bridge. And we'd really like to be able to use another access going west to University Black. Right now, we're, we can't turn on the tavern or your county gravel going west either because of the bridges that are there on that intersection going south. They have to go completely north on 466, two and a half, three more miles to access out of that area going west. Matter of fact, there's only one way going east. And that's on 308, same road that this bridge is, which would make a nice throughway through if we could do it. That's what we're hoping for, is to get that through. That's when the, we put the culverts on the end, that, that's huge. We can make the turn on to university. Off 308, Marshalltown's really not an option.
You can't turn off university on the Marshalltown?
Yes, you can, but you can't get back off by next to Jimmy's. Cause there's not a intercept, it's really tight right there because it's that old school road that dead ends right at Jimmy's driveway. Yeah, it's really tight right there. Short of making that intersection bigger.
Right.
Well, you know how that'll be.
Yeah, that actually would be that.
For us, that would be a quite beneficial thing to have fixed.
Yeah. Redoing that intersection may be financially doable. Where it sounds like that's gonna be quite a, quite a cost to replace that bridge down on 308. And, and I'm familiar with those shortcomings there as, as you know, Craig. It's a, I've been up and down that road with heavy equipment a lot in the last four or five years.
And on 309, when you get to that first mile, 456, we got that little structure right there that sooner or later is gonna come out. But I mean, I guess if the sooner would be, there's two structures that are actually, that have to be replaced. One right at the corner and just to the north. Right? Is not very far up to that other one, is it? Like not feet wise, I'm not sure.
So what you're saying is the cheapest alternative is the concrete, concrete block, concrete bridge. But that's not, that's gonna restrict the flow yet. Yeah, that's what I mean. It's gonna cut the backside of it.
Then the back walls will be out in the, in the dyke, you know? So they'll, then the back walls, the water will go through instead of getting the back wall, see? So they, they still have a wing wall on there, the abutments and floor line.
Right.
So, and that'll be back into the bank, but I guess.
So that'll cut down.
That's a lot of money for.
I know. I was just, you know, but that's gonna, could, could cut the back walls out and that though too, right? That's what I was thinking.
I mean, the one north of there, we don't have no trouble with.
If you're trying to put a 20 foot.
Yeah, that's Marshalltown.
Yeah. That's actually sized probably correctly, the one, Marshall. That's a lot newer too. That's, that is too old.
The Marshalltown, yeah, about the mid 90s. Cause I, I'm, I hope we're, I was there when we tore the old one out.
So fix this correctly, it's 235.
At minimum for a steel bridge, 251. Or this is why I love my job. But I think, I mean, if the county's gonna spend the money, I would rather see us fix the bridge at the bottom of the hill on 309 and fix that corner there. Get rid of those structures. We got them, already know what has to go in there. Cause that'll take size that one and the next two on 309 up. Yeah. And 466 come over that little hill. There's a big, well, it's eight or 10 foot box culvert, probably 10 by 10. But then their road's still gonna be closed, so.
So how hard would it be?
Also a blind corner. That one you're talking about is you're down on the bottom of a, yeah, that's a dangerous corner.
How hard is it to, you know, you were talking about it, the Jim Daniels stuff, I'm assuming. Is that, and I'm kind of familiar with that area in here. But now, would it be to make that corner if they did widen all that out?
Oh boy.
Who all would you have to?
You wouldn't go Jimmy's when he go.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Yeah, Jimmy has the 80 on the one side and Lynn's have the 80 on the other side.
You'd have to take into their fields.
Yes, oh, I'm sure you would.
Yeah.
I'm sure you would. Yeah, yes. It starts at Dan 308 and goes north on that side of the road.
I mean, actually almost that's the best fix. I mean, I know you want the bridge and I get that. I, but I don't know if we can afford that, you know, outside of maybe we can get it through.
Well, I would call for it.
Yeah. Yeah.
Do you have to have structure there for fire rescue and police though on that road that?
Cause there's access from the east.
We have, we have. There's one house on that mile line, but the only route now is coming from the east.
But they shouldn't be crossed, they shouldn't up until now, shouldn't have crossed that structure anyway because you know, they know where all those structures are, they'll go around.
It's been closed more than it's been open lately.
Right, right. In the past few years, it washed out many times.
Well, let's see what Greg says.
Yeah.
Okay, on that small structure. I think you're gonna have trouble. The same small structure.
Yeah, put a small one that is not.
That's not an option.
No.
Is it fixed right or don't?
Exactly.
Right.
I mean, we're talking 150,000 for something that won't work is the wrong idea.
I'm just hoping we should get some money on that small structure to help upsides.
But yeah, I, I got the, did you, did I send you a letter of? Has anybody questioned you last? From Johnson Engineering for the inspection, so you see what it says. Okay. Where it says that the sheet that says we need to close it immediately. I'll send it when I get back to the shop, but yeah.
You know, that's possible. See how that works out.
What was that?
It's the water's still gonna go and once it fills up.
So where's that, that Baptist Creek is worse than the Vermillion River. It takes more water. It could be the Vermillion River, you can walk across it, the road will be flooded on the Vermillion. I mean, on the university road. But just so you know that no matter what we do on there, it's not gonna help the flooding on Vermillion Road, north of Tavern, hack or the Baptist Creek runs next to it. Just, just to make that clear, this is only to keep it from bottlenecking up behind there.
Yeah, cause it floods over your bikes when, when it, it just goes, when it goes.
So I'll check with Greg and see what he has. Maybe they come down, we can meet with him. This is South Dakota LTAP. He's the head of it and he's pretty sharp on that. Think he operated this small structure thing, the grant. You know, they come out and checked all your bridges. So I don't know if we're supposed to get the map from that.
I think Drew has it.
Oh, does he? Did they send one out to you?
Yes, and I have upgraded it too.
Okay.
These are the ones that are not on the map.
Okay.
I don't have that map yet.
Oh, you don't have it?
Not yet.
Okay, I'll send this into Old Tech then. Okay. Two of them are on 306, so that's ours. Oh, that's 305.
The only, the only one I was wondering is the one on Marshalltown. I didn't mark it.
That, that bridge, we inspect that, so that's.
That one is on there. I didn't know for sure. This one's on abandoned, rodents closed.
Yep, that's ours too.
I wrote that on there.
Yeah, they still got utilities running across the north side of that bridge.
Okay, there's a dot on your map that you emailed me and that little spot right there on some of these, middle of some of these people. So I think that is a good. So I just, I could have.
I'll get that to Old Tech and see where they, or why they missed it. Cause they, I think they put out a feeler to you guys to see if. I thought maybe you'd already got a map. I don't see this, which is, I'm not, I don't bother being, but I thought maybe they sent you something telling you that. Yeah, you know, this is all the structures for today and that's why you, you must already seen something.
Yeah, Wayne, Wayne might have that stuff too. He gets most of my own.
Yeah, I keep forgetting about Wayne being laid up. But yeah, I could, I'll get hold of Barbara and maybe the meeting at the end of the month, he can come down and if he thinks he needs to, or Andrew, one of the two. If that works.
Yep.
That sounds like Old Tech plan.
Yeah, you can get, just keep me posted.
Yep, I will.
Anything else, Rod?
Seems like there was some, oh, something to think about. Cause I didn't have it on there, but I thought about it last night. There was a fire east of Wakanda. And I heard something on my scanner, thought it was our bridge that we had closed. So who would actually cover our liability? If somebody got hurt on one of our bridges, is that safety benefits? Or who carry, who's our liability? I guess I've never looked at that before.
South Dakota Public Assurance Line, Claims Associates.
It would be those, okay. Because, you know, we've had requests to leave those closed bridge, but leave the bridge there so we can fish off. Closed bridge, but leave the bridge there so we can fish off. Of them, and I talked to other counties that did that and actually. Had a little girl fall off the bridge because they didn't put a fence up on a railing and. So I'll talk to the insurance company, cause I was wondering, what if we just took the bridge plank? Off of the. Bridge, leave the structure there, because as you know, we've been trying to get this one bridge taken out for five years. And we gotta do, end with the state now and. They haven't even let it, I thought it was coming out this winter, beautiful winter, dry down there. They haven't even let the project yet, and we have three or four other ones on that. List for removal through the state, and we've closed like four more since then. So I don't know how long this has been going on too long as far as I'm concerned. So I don't know, I just wonder. I'll bring it up at the next meeting, if you, if that's something we should do.
We talk about it.
If they should be able to go fishing off the bridge, we could. Uh, barricade it so they can't drive on there with even a four-wheeler, just be. A walking, but then I don't know who's gonna keep track of the. We're still gonna have to keep track of the bridge plank, something gets rotten, so nobody falls through and how are we gonna keep them? You know, the railings are made of steel, they won't keep anybody. A car from going off the bridge, they're just there for. Say you got a guard rail, so I don't know, seems to be like a big. Liability, but I didn't know who to, I never thought about those guys. I don't know, who would I talk to up there, Kerry? Just call.
Call up and ask, yeah, they'll get you the right person.
I'm sure somebody's had to deal with this. But, does. I'll bring it up, I mean, I'll have something next meeting.
Unless you've gotten any more bids on the Currys Center ditch, I've only had one bid.
I have.
You haven't got any.
No phone calls, no emails.
You haven't got any. That's where, how long do you wait on?
Didn't, we didn't, I didn't put a date on there. Usually we give them, I don't know, anywhere from two weeks to a month, depends on how big the project is. But also, if you only got one by now and is able to do the work by now.
Well, he, I think he's talking more spring because it'd be frost, try to pull some of those trees out.
Oh, okay.
So then, I would just put it on next meeting, even though you're not gonna be here, just open the bid then and, yeah.
I was gonna ask you, is that something to ask you, open that annual ditch board meeting?
Doesn't have to be there.
Yeah, we put it on there.
Yeah, I never had no questions. No questions, no inquiries, you're nothing, so.
I just had that one. That was it. Come out, looked at it, we went through it.
And I didn't receive any comeback either, so the addresses must have been good. Cause that happens once in a while, get a wrong address from, they might have moved since the last time. But like I said, I did send out eight requests, so. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot, guys.
Liquor license transfer hearing for Toby's Lounge.
Any reason why we should transfer?
Andy, any problems with you?
Hello, Andy.
I see he's on.
I don't think this, I don't think it's a problem.
I'll move to approve the transfer.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing done, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Hockler.
Yes, motion passes, I think, I think.
Added the funding to replace.
Here, is here.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
The funding to replace small structures is dependent on the number you have. So that's. So there's, there's gotta be. Some money there, and you know how many structures you had, Paul?
I think it's based on the county, so it's not.
Based on the county, okay. Okay. Okay, but so there is money there, so I'll get all the, I'll get all the LTAP and we'll go from there. I guess next meeting is end of the month, correct?
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second, no, that, alright, thanks.
Ina, are you coming over? Buttons up. There you go.
Put a little step up there.
Yeah, I need a chair.
It's a little pictometry flyover?
Yes, uh, I got an email from Ryan, who's a project manager. Um, because of the, the storm, the snowstorm, the landen storm, um, down in Texas.
You guys take it outside?
Thank you.
Uh, this landen storm that, which had Texas, when they start flying every year, they start this out because it's usually. They don't get any snow, so now that they've got snow, they can't fly. So they would like to up our flyover instead of end April first to May, do it in the next couple of weeks. If. We don't get any snow. Because. I'm afraid if we don't do that, then come spring, when we are on the schedule. If the weather stays like this, we're gonna have floods all over. So. I just wanted you guys to. To know that that's what the possibility, but if there's anything, we get snow or anything, they won't do it.
Any questions for Ina?
Uh, it looks like the tendays real good for uh, keeping snow away.
Yeah, don't we get up here?
Yeah, the wind is a problem, though.
All that we have, yeah.
The wind, and it has to be so much sun and, I don't know, so.
And then, since you're here, do you know about the abatement for the city?
Um. It's a property that the city bought halfway through the year. So they're asking for half a year's taxes to be abated.
Where is?
In July. Rhonda was down and talked to me about it, but I don't really know anything about it, other than that.
Is that something we normally do, give an abatement in the middle of the year?
I, I think for.
For a non-taxable.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do we know even what street it's on?
Yeah.
Yeah. Said Johnson's.
It's um, out there where um. The Paintbrush Corp, not that building, but their back building over by the city building. Where the city shop is, it was owned by the Paintbrush Corporation.
Is it right next to the city shop?
Yes.
Just west of it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Good purchase on their part.
They're thinking ahead.
Entertain a motion.
For which?
For the abatement. I get a second?
I'll second it.
I got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing done, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Hockler.
Yes, motion passes. Uh, vouchers, everybody get to see those with the additional ones?
I have one, I have one question. Uh, Olson's uh, for the bats, they've got thirty-nine ninety for, to remove bats.
They also, um, just cleaned out the guano and disinfected everything up there.
Okay.
Got rid of all the dead ones, live ones, sealed up, anything that needed to be sealed up.
So there's more to it than just.
Yeah.
I thought, wow. The golf can in the bat.
There's more to it.
Yeah, I think so, figured there was, okay, I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing done, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. Does anybody have anything else? Entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
I have a motion and a second, roll call.
Hammond.
Yes.
Manning.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Packard.
Yes.
Hockler.
Yes, we're adjourned, thank you.